Okay, so we're underway. I'm filling in for Alan, so if you can all bear with me. First order is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck? Knopf?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Wolf? O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And McFadden? I have 11 out of 14.
Okay, we have a quorum. Item number two, just a reminder for everyone to speak directly into the microphone for a BATV recording. Item number three is to approve minutes for October 26, 2020. I'll move we pass that.
Second, Rosado.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
O'Brien?
Hi.
Callahan?
Hi.
Meitzler?
Hi.
Malley?
Hi.
Uwer?
Hi.
Serone?
Hi.
McFadden? Miller?
Hi.
Rosado?
Hi.
Beck? Knopf?
Hi.
Is that you back?
I just joined, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. We're voting on approving the minutes for October 26.
Hi.
Thank you. Knopf?
Hi.
Chantet?
Hi.
Baron?
Hi.
And Wolf is absent. Motion carried.
Okay, item number four. Any items removed, added, or changed? Dan, do you have anything?
Your Honor, aware of none.
Okay, I'm not your honor. Okay, item number five is manage from the public. Laura, do we have anyone?
No, we do not.
Okay, so we'll move right into the public hearing then. Public hearing is now open. Do we have anyone for the public hearing?
We do not.
Okay. Yes, I can close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Moving on to item number seven, resolution 20-131-R, adoption of 2021 budget. Dan Chantet?
So, point of order, we actually do have to vote to close the public hearing, so I would move that we do that.
Okay, movement by Chantet. I'll second it. So, Phil will do a roll call vote. Jenny, please.
Chantet?
Hi.
Baron?
Hi.
Wolf, absent. O'Brien?
Hi.
Callahan?
Hi.
Meitzler?
Hi.
Malley?
Hi.
Uwer?
Hi.
Serone?
Hi.
McFadden?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rosado?
Hi.
Beck?
Hi.
Anna?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Okay, so now we can move on to item number seven. Dan, do you have this?
Indeed. So there is actually no memo. This is a pretty simple line, which is to adopt the 2021 budget. We had extensive discussions last week. I would open it up for any additional discussion.
Alderman, Chantet?
Sure.
This is Peggy. I just wanted to point out that the item that remained open for discussion was the $50,000 for the side block. So, the budget as it currently stands is how it was originally presented. And so it includes the 50,000.
Thank you. And as I recall, we were, we were pretty split on that anyways.
Yes. So I have two totals that I could provide you. The original total, as it was presented, if you would like that number, it's 130,506,410.
Thank you. Do we have anybody from the public who is, who is joining yet for any discussion or any comment?
No, we do not.
Would anyone care to make a motion regarding the adoption of the 2021 budget?
I move we adopt the budget as presented. Malley?
Second, Baron?
You have a motion and a second to adopt as presented that is including the 50,000. Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Malley?
Hi.
Uwer?
No.
Serone?
No.
McFadden?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rosado?
No.
Beck?
Hi.
Knopf?
No.
Chantet?
Hi.
Baron?
Hi.
Wolf, absent. O'Brien?
Hi.
Callahan?
No.
And Meitzler?
No.
Motion carried seven to six.
Okay, moving right along then. We'll go to item number eight, ordinance 20-67, tax levy. I'll give that to you, Dan, again.
Sure, actually, I'd like to take all three of these levies together. 7.7 for 2067, the ordinance 2068, that is for SSA number 30 for around 6,500. That includes the detention maintenance for the Prairie Trails South. Then we also have SSA 62, that is for the downtown, including our contribution towards Main Street. Peggy, is there anything else that you wanted to add?
No, I noticed in my memo that I didn't give you the actual amount on the ordinance for downtown, the downtown SSA, and that is 27,000. The total contribution will be 40,000, but part of that collected through the tip.
That has to do with the way the county does the collection, if I remember.
That's correct.
Got it. Any additional discussion regarding these items? Otherwise, I would make a motion that we send to council 20-67. That is for the general tax levy.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Chantet? Baron?
Hi.
Wolf, absent. O'Brien?
Hi.
Callahan?
Hi.
Meitzler?
Hi.
Malley?
Hi.
Uwer?
Hi.
Serone?
Hi.
McFadden?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rosado?
Hi.
Beck?
Hi.
Anna?
Hi.
Motion carried 13 to zero.
Okay, Dan, you might as well take them all down.
Yep, make a motion that we approve ordinance 20-68. That is the tax levy for SSA number 30.
Second, Malley?
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Chantet? Chantet?
Hi.
Baron?
Hi.
Wolf? Absent. O'Brien?
Hi.
Callahan?
Hi.
Meitzler?
Hi.
Malley?
Hi.
Uwer?
Hi.
Serone?
Hi.
McFadden?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rosado?
Hi.
Beck?
Hi.
Anna?
Hi.
Motion carried 13 to zero.
Thank you. And then for the tax levy for SSA number 62 encompassing Main Street, I would make a motion that we send that to council.
Second, Malley?
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Chantet?
Hi.
Baron?
Hi.
Wolf? Absent. O'Brien?
Hi.
Callahan?
Hi.
Meitzler?
Hi.
Malley?
Hi.
Uwer?
Hi.
Serone?
Hi.
McFadden?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rosado?
Hi.
Beck?
Hi.
Anna?
Hi.
Motion carried 13 to zero.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Alderman Chantet, there was one thing that I did want to say. I thought of it as we're taking the vote. These will need to go on the regular agenda and the consent agenda. Because they need to follow the passing of the budget. They can't be approved prior to the official approval of the budget.
Yes, indeed. Thank you for the reminder.
Alderman O'Brien, if I may make a comment. I just would like to acknowledge the work of Peggy and her staff in putting together this budget. Every year, it's a tremendous amount of work that goes into creating our budget and all of the documentation that goes along with it. And Peggy and her staff always do a great job, but this year was an exceptionally difficult year to do this because of COVID and because of the long-term financial impacts that we expect that it will have on our organization. And I think we're very fortunate to have someone with Peggy's experience and expertise, as well as those of her staff, and also the people throughout the organization who also have to provide the financial information to the finance department. It's very much a collaborative effort, and we do our very best to use each dollar that is provided to the city to its maximum extent possible to provide excellent service to the citizens of Otavia. So, thank you very much for passing this budget this year.
Thank you. I'm mute, Mike.
No, thank you. I wanted to echo that, Laura. I think, I think Peggy does an excellent job. Since I've been on the council, every, every budget is done excellent. And, you know, every year, it's always a challenge trying to find the resources and trying to balance it all and bring something to the council that we can all approve upon. And I just think Peggy does a wonderful, excellent job. And just thank you, Peggy, for all your efforts, you and your team. I guess moving along, we'll go to item 11, that would be ordinance 20-59, municipal cannabis retailer's occupation tax. Dan?
Yes, indeed. Thank you. So, we basically have a decision to make if we are going to have a dispensary in our town. We do need to set the tax rate. Memo from Laura does note that our surrounding communities, Geneva, St. Charles, and North Aurora have all set their tax rate at 3%. There is the opportunity, obviously, to lower ours if we would like to, to be maybe more competitive, to attract a dispensary. But then, we are losing out on money that we could be receiving from this. Staff is recommending that we go along with our neighbors at 3%. So I would throw it out for discussion.
Well, if I may, I would definitely agree with staff on that. I would, this is as high as we can go, is 3%. I'd keep it at 3%. If the state, you know, lets us go higher, I'd go as high as we can go with it. It's a revenue source. I, that's just the way I see it. I was opposed to us even selling cannabis in our city for recreational purposes. But since we have it, I would think just try to maximize whatever revenues we can.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Alderman Rosado, here. I feel the same way Mike does. I think we should charge at 3% and be the same as our neighbors and see what develops.
Hey, Dan, this is Drew. Hey, I, I don't, we waited a little bit longer than everybody else. We saw what they did. Gives us a little bit of an advantage. We can come in and say 2.5, 2.75, make ourselves look a little better. And there's nothing to preclude us from raising it up a bit later, should we want to, but I think it would give us an advantage in attracting somebody, which would be revenue we're not, we don't have right now, other than match everybody and have no advantage. So, say we take a shot at going a little bit lower, which isn't going to impact revenues that much, and see if we can't get somebody and bring some new revenue to town.
Thank you. So, actually, I think my only question is, we don't really have any numbers, so we don't know how much we're handicapping or discounting what our potential revenues are. I remember from previous discussions, I thought we had pegged it at around maybe 50,000 to 100,000. We don't have any, any numbers yet, do we?
We do not. On the one hand, we could compare ourselves to what neighboring communities have been receiving from this tax, but it is, you know, similar to the grocery store scenario where it's a really incremental business, or are you just capturing and exist part of an existing market? And so, we may not be able to say that we replicate the exact same amount of revenue as exists in North Aurora if we end up sharing the same customers.
Alderman Chantet, Alderman Malley here.
Sure.
I would agree with Alderman McFadden. If we start at 2.5%, we're not leaving any money on the table because we're not collecting any now. And we could revisit that. It could give us a, an opportunity to attract. And I totally agree with Alderman McFadden.
Got it. Anybody else?
Dan, this is Joe. I, I would agree with Drew and Tony on that. Going a little bit lower, maybe attract more, you get more sales, you make the difference up in, in higher sales.
This is Alderman Miller.
And it's, it's really hard to know without, without numbers, to know how much we are really discounting this. I, I guess if I were to entertain in dropping it, why don't then we'll make a splash. But then there's also part of me that says that the retailer knows that we've already telegraphed that we intend on raising it, so they'll, they'll
You're breaking up, Dan.
What's that?
You're breaking up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is, is there any additional discussion, or does anyone care to make a motion?
I thought that Alderman Miller wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I was also thinking about coming in just slightly lower than the max to try and attract one or two. And like Joe said, making up the difference in sales or multiple places.
This is Alderman Serone. I'll take the opposite view. A $100 purchase, we're looking at 50 cents. I don't think people are going to travel further to save that half of a percent on a, on a purchase, so I wouldn't leave anything on the table.
This is Alderman Baron, and I have to agree with Nick on this. I think the one thing that could really work to our advantages, keeping it at 3%, but also really deciding on a location and fact that we haven't really put any restrictions on that. We definitely have some opportunities, even along, it was mentioned, Randall Road, which provides us with a lot of traffic or a lot of parking there. And it also is out of the way of the other locations which are on Kirk and Route 31. So this brings us a little bit farther west to where maybe we can attract some people farther west. So instead of going to North Aurora, St. Charles, we might be able to get them also with Randall Road being the main road.
Thank you. So, any additional discussion? Or does anyone care to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion. Alderman Malley here. I move we amend the ordinance to 2.5%.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Any, any additional discussion? Click call the roll, please.
I have a motion by Malley the second by Callahan, was it?
That was McFadden.
McFadden, thank you. Okay.
That is to amend the motion, right? What's in front of us?
Yes, amend the ordinance to 2.5%. Okay, I have Alderman Lay?
Hi.
Uwer?
No.
Serone?
No.
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rosado?
No.
Beck?
No.
Knopf?
Hi.
Chantet?
No.
Baron?
No.
Wolf is absent. O'Brien?
No.
Callahan?
No.
And Meitzler?
No.
Motion failed, 4 to 9.
Okay, then I would move that we accept staff's recommendation and set the rate at 3%.
Second, Rosado?
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? I click call the roll, please.
Chantet?
Hi.
Baron?
Hi.
Wolf, absent. O'Brien?
Hi.
Callahan?
Hi.
Meitzler?
Hi.
Malley?
Hi.
Uwer?
Hi.
Serone?
Hi.
McFadden?
No.
Miller?
Hi.
Rosado?
Hi.
Beck?
Hi.
Anna?
Hi.
Motion carried 12 to 1.
Okay, thank you.
Item number 12 now, discussion update of the strategic plan. Laura?
Okay, are you able to see my screen with the strategic plan PowerPoint up there?
Yes.
Okay, let me hide this so that I can read things. Okay, so, when we last met, we discussed the strategic plan items that we wanted to include in this next, I'll call it midterm plan from 2021 to, and actually, I got the wrong date on there, I'm so sorry. But let me start with our first objective. The first section that I'd like to talk about are our economic vitality objectives. And the first one was to hire a business development manager. Decided to go in a little bit of a different direction for the way that the strategic plan itself is drafted. You know, it was interesting, I attended a meeting that was, Britta McKenna had had cups of coffee with 50 individuals around town, and then at the end of that, she did a presentation that were things that people had said about the city that they live in. And one of the things that kept coming up in the conversations that she had was people wished that they were more informed about the strategic direction of the city. And that, those conversations were had shortly after we had done our initial three-year plan, strategic action plan for the city. So I thought, boy, I guess perhaps what we did was a not such a great job of communicating what our strategic plan was. So in this iteration, I'd like to try to maybe put a little bit more meat on the bone to explain what the objectives are and why city council felt that these things were important. And so, a couple of weeks ago, I sent this document out to you that outlines our strategic areas and then also our objectives. And so, I'll take these one by one, and I just wanted to know if you had any comments about any of them, if there were ways in which perhaps I misunderstood city council's intentions, because what I would like to do with the document from here is take each one of these and for staff to articulate what we believe we need to accomplish in each one of the next three years in order to realize this objective for the city. So the first one was to hire a business development manager, and I was And I was wondering if anybody had any comments on what is written here? And is this a good way to do this? Does that, does this work for you? Let me see, I can't really see everybody if I'm in this this mode, but just chime in if there's anything that you feel needs to be changed. Of course, this is going to be key to this area of our strategic plan.
Laura, this is Marty. Just for us, I can't see the presentation that you have. It's not coming through on my end.
Okay.
I can see the videos, but I can't see the presentation.
Okay. Let me see if I.
I see it. So Laura, I don't think it's on your end.
Yeah, I can see it, Laura.
Okay.
Um, one of the things that I can do for you, Alderman Callahan, is maybe I can email the presentation to you. Let me see if I.
Never mind, I'm on my phone. I just have to toggle between two buttons. It shows up definitely on my phone. I've got it.
You've got it now?
Sorry. Yes, I've got it.
I'm going to leave it in its edit mode as well. I hope that everybody is able to see it in its edit mode. In case there are things that you want to change, then I can kind of change them on the fly. But I think I'm going to move on to our next objective. And that is to actively market Batavia to new businesses. Once we bring the position on board, we will be able to target specific types of business. We know that our Randall Road corridor has been impacted with a lot of vacancies. And so maybe we'll have opportunities there. It might not, as I say, conform to our traditional expectations for tenants. We may have to be a little bit creative and see, see what's happening out in the marketplace and make sure that we position ourselves to avail ourself of those opportunities. Are there any comments or requested changes to objective 1.2? Okay, I'll move on to the third objective under economic vitality is to promote opportunities for downtown redevelopment and work to cultivate and facilitate projects like One Washington Place. We know we're on the precipice of this project finally getting underway. And we know that our, one of our stated reasons for wanting to pursue this project was the tide of economic growth that we expect to accompany the project. And then just laying out some of the specifics of what is included in this mixed-use development. And I don't think that it will be the last of these types of opportunities. I think that creating this type of density in the downtown area is part of our future financial success. And if anybody has any comments on this slide. Okay, this is the last of our economic vitality goals, which is to continue to implement aspects of the streetscape plan. And here I would like to recognize the efforts of Alderman Beck and the the, you know, multi-disciplinary team that she has put together to take a look at our existing plans and also identify other opportunities for enhancing our implementation of our streetscape plan in our downtown. So we want to build upon the success that we experienced with the Wooner. But make sure that we are doing our best at place-making here in our community to make it as vibrant of a place to visit as possible. And our goal is to create a list of priority projects, a timeline for implementation, also the mechanism for funding those projects. Any comments?
Hi, Laura, this is Jennifer.
Yes, Jennifer.
Um, so as I'm looking through some of this and I see that, you know, we're really definitely hitting on the retail aspect of everything, especially for the downtown and Randall Road. But I also think another important part is our business parks and what, you know, COVID any effects may have. We may not know anything at this point. And so I think that's also important part to keep a pulse on is our business parks.
Absolutely. That might be something that I can work into this bullet point 1.2. What do you think?
Yeah.
We can do and we can do an inventory of vacancies in our industrial areas of the city. And, you know, come up with a plan for marketing those to new business tenants for them and or property owners. We don't have much in the way of green space left for developments. We're almost all built up in our business park, but certainly vacancies do come available from time to time. I'll tell you, what, one of the things we're witnessing is that they don't stay on the market long. It's kind of like it was, it has been that way for residences in our municipality. But it's becoming the same for the the industrial park as well, that that places don't stay vacant for very long. But it certainly deserves attention, as you mentioned.
Yeah, because I mean, it helps also with retention of, you know, instead of looking outside and going to West Chicago, they might be like, you know, we want to move up and there might be a space that we could, you know, help them move up.
That's an excellent idea. That's one of the things we love to see is the Batavia businesses when they are growing, that they just look for a larger space right here in Batavia. And then we're able to sort of backfill their prior location with a new business from the outside, maybe. Or the next smaller business moving into that size property as well.
Yep.
Just make a note on that. Okay, um, so.
Laura, can I just, with what Jennifer was saying, I think too, with that is we need to sell our electric utility to businesses coming in, especially say industrial businesses coming in. I mean, we have an excellent track record with our electric utility. We haven't raised rates in five years. I mean, I know we're struggling with Prairie State, but, you know, Gary and his team seem to be managing it pretty well. And we have a redundant system. So if people, you know, if business, if something goes out, you know, power goes out, it automatically comes right back on again. There's not a great big loss of power. People are not out or businesses are not out of power for a lengthy time. As they are say with ComEd, who would be, say, our competition. And not that they are a competition, but we can sell our utility for people to come here because now they don't have to rely upon the ComEd response to any kind of outages. So I think it's something we should be selling, especially to industrial users.
You know, another thing to add to that, Mike, is promotes the the safety of our community. And that's both from, you know, the police and then also, you know, fire department recently got the top honors from the ISO, which doesn't matter too much to insuring residential properties, but it needs a lot for the cost of insurance on industrial and commercial. So that that really is something else that we can promote to attract businesses to Batavia.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, transportation, we're going to continue to pursue implementation of a road diet on Illinois Route 31. Recently, Rahat came to present to you a resolution to pursue grant funding for the engineering and and creation of this. We are happy that IDOT seems to be encouraging us to continue to pursue this. And so we're sort of already on our way with this. It's a continuation from the prior plan. I have a number in here for the number of miles of sharrows or bike lanes to add per year. But perhaps city council, you might suggest something.
Laura, do we know how many miles we have right now?
I don't. I'm sorry. I can, I can find that out for you and get back to you on that. It's 2.2 many miles now. Keep writing my notes into my PowerPoint here.
I guess the other question I would have to try and figure out how many is practical to add is looking at the current bike plan and the routes that they had established in their, in their map. Because I know they had, they had a targeted list of and a targeted map of what they would like to designate as, you know, as bike paths, as bike lanes on our streets. And then how much does it cost to to add a sharow? And then figure out what that timing and that materials looks like, time and cost materials, time and materials cost.
Or perhaps what this looks like in year one is to quickly answer that question and to that our first step will be to commit to some miles of sharrows or bike lanes per year. You know, as a way of getting this particular objective started right away in 2021.
I think that would be great, putting together a plan since we just passed the budget and didn't budget for any of these.
Right.
But then also, you know, as you said, you know, agree that, you know, a certain amount's going to be put in to plan for it.
Very good. Thank you. So this was kind of developed from updating the bicycle plan, which we had to put on hold this year due to the expected revenue shortfalls. But it was suggested that rather than look at it from a bicycle-centric standpoint, that we develop an active transportation plan. One of the things that I do want to point out with the active transportation plan or redo of the bicycle plan is that it is part of the comprehensive plan. And so there may be ways in which those two things interact with one another that may also cause the need to update our comprehensive plan as well. So I want to just keep that in mind and, you know, I don't know, maybe we should take a look at that comprehensive plan in 2021 to make a determination if that is something that we want to add into this three-year strategic action plan. How do people feel about that?
Laura, Mark, that makes, that makes sense, I think. You also have to look at it, incorporate it into, if you're in here, the fact that you mentioned determining accessibility and whether the basic necessities are available within a 20-minute walker bike. Then that needs to be part of the first or the second 1.2 where we're marketing and trying to bring retail in that's going to meet those needs as well. If that's, if it's all part of the plan that this is a walkable, you know, a lot of portions of the community are walkable, then you need to say, hey, then we're actively marketing to meet that need as well.
Right. Good point. I think that's a good thing when these things are all kind of relating to one another.
So Laura, and also would add to what we were trying to accomplish with complete streets, right?
Yes.
But the active transportation plan really is representing a complete street. So I would think we should look into the comprehensive, look at the comprehensive plan and and see if we can update it any regarding this.
Okay. The next set of objectives relate to infrastructure?
Laura, can I interrupt you? I'm sorry, just.
Of course.
Stay on transportation. I'd like to see us, I, there are a lot of people on the first ward at the Batavia Apartments. You know, they're kind of in an island, on an island, all by themselves at Batavia Apartments. And I know we're trying to integrate a lot of these folks into downtown Batavia. But I think we need to give them a leg up, you know, via transportation to get to the train station. A lot of these folks, I don't believe have automobiles. And just, I think for, for just, you know, for their economic vitality, individual economic vitality, the, if we can, it can happen this year, but just keep it on our horizon and that we keep, you know, we try to get this, this group of people, transportation somehow, public transportation through Batavia to the train stations, either in Geneva or in Aurora, to help these people go out and find employment. I just like to not lose sight of that.
Sounds good. Okay, for infrastructure, we've got some good examples recently of addressing drainage problems that went back for years and years, but really came to light in the flooding situation we had in 2015. And city council dedicated funding and bond funding to complete those projects. But there are a number of other infrastructure projects that were identified in this budget that we still need to come up with a plan for. And so this objective is aimed at creation of these future plans and funding resources for not only constructing them, but also once we build it, we take care of it, the ongoing maintenance for those. Our second objective under infrastructure was to review service level expectations.
Sorry, Laura, I was on, I was on mute there.
Oh, no problem, Mark. Go ahead.
The, with the, the funding policy, I had mentioned it a couple of weeks back. I'd like to see the potential of using gaming revenue exclusively for funding these infrastructure projects. And then maybe additionally, it doesn't exist right now, but maybe cannabis tax revenue.
Very good.
Hey, Laura.
Yes.
Laura, those lines also on the funding policy. I, you know, reading this year's budget, then I went back and I reviewed last year's budget. And then I went back and I looked at 2019, 2019's budget. And we have in the back of it, projects we're going to lined up for the five years, five-year plan. But 2019, we had projects that we really didn't touch upon in 2020. We had it in 2020's budget. And then we didn't touch upon it in 2020. Now it's in 2021's budget. And it's just getting kicked down the, the can is getting kicked down the road. So I think it's important to try to get some kind of a funding policy. I know Gary's been talking about this, but I just, I. but I, I just, I thought I'd go back and look and, and I was really surprised to see how many projects just keep getting rolled over into the next year. So I just wanted to bring up how important this will be.
Okay, the second objective was to, uh, kind of goes hand in hand with, uh, the first objective. It's review service level expectations. We're, as you know, experiencing extreme financial pressures. We, uh, you know, have a deficit budget this year that we, um, solved with utilizing reserves, but that is not a policy that we can continue in the future. Um, we know that we have, uh, labor costs that are going to continue to increase into the future, as well as just the nature of everything costing more each year. Um, you add that to the fact that there are 20 positions that were eliminated as part of the reductions made to the 2010 budget that still haven't been restored. So we are really operating it from a headcount standpoint at the bare number of, bare minimum number of people necessary to achieve the level of service that we have currently. But so we, we just need to have this conversation and we need to have it soon about how to address being able to be, uh, sustainable at the current service levels and whether those are appropriate. It's, it's a completely, um, appropriate level, uh, conversation for us to have. And, um, Public Works can assist us with that, um, taking a look at what, how that affects our ongoing expenses based upon the, uh, service levels that we establish. And then the third objective in infrastructure is to enhance the safety of bikers and walkers in our neighborhoods. Um, we know that we receive complaints about the speed that motorists drive through our neighborhoods and there are, we, we've done the slow down campaign, which was one strategy that we used to try to raise awareness and, and get people to slow down. Um, but there are other strategies that we might use for traffic calming and improving safety. And this objective, we will, uh, look at those, see what those cost and determine if, um, we can provide funding for those in the future. And then the, uh, another area was the river. And the first one came from our previous plan, which was creating a master plan for development of our riverfront. Um, while that was part of the previous plan, and we did have a, a great sense of, um, cooperation from our biggest partner, who is Batavia Park District in that project. Now, we have a scope of work and an intergovernmental agreement to share the cost. And we have a state with, uh, who is purporting to provide funding for the engineering and removal of low-head dams. It's, uh, I guess what I'm saying is it's kind of the time is now for this project. And so hopefully we'll be able to move this, uh, forward quite a ways over the course of these next three years. And the next, once we solve the problem of the dam removal and what, uh, will be the future of the Debo Pond, um, we look at the, the rest of the plan as well. And really look at our river as a source of tourism and economic development for not only our area, but it's something to do in cooperation with the other municipalities up and down the river to, uh, really enhance our entire region.
Hey Laura, quick question, um, with Hitchcock Design. I remember as part of the presentation, they, uh, mentioned there'd be community involvement. Do you know if that's going to be just a survey, or is that going to be soliciting people to, um, participate in some of the planning?
I think it will be the latter, Mark. From what I've seen of the detail of their project plan that they have are in-person meetings, charrettes, if you will, um, for people to provide their input into the, uh, what they would like to see. And then in another iteration, when Hitchcock Design utilizes that information to come back with, um, some ideations of, uh, the possibilities of what could be to kind of run those by those, all of those same constituent groups to really, hone in on a very specific plan.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And our second river objective is to actively market our river front in, uh, development opportunities. I, I think Batavia is, is pretty unique in our area for all the developable land that we have that is directly adjacent to, uh, the river. But as Alderman Miller pointed out in a, in a, uh, one of our meetings, is that developers want to know what the city would like to see in terms of development, um, so that they can bring in developers who can make that, that happen for us. So, um, this objective is aimed at articulating, um, our wants and wishes in that, in that regard, so that we can attract the right type of development and, um, marketing plans to attract those developers. And just, uh, this, this was one that was, there, there are probably inexpensive ways that we are not kept, uh, capitalizing on having a river right here in the heart of our downtown. And when I brought up this idea with, uh, Batavia Park District, they're pretty excited about maybe collaborating on some ways that we could come up with, um, to create engagement between the community and their river and, um, the, the ways that wouldn't be very expensive or maybe not cost anything at all. And then the last area was, um, diversity. And, um, we didn't really articulate what a specific goal would be with regard to diversity. So one of the things I did was to research, um, what some other communities have put as objectives in this part of their strategic action plan, uh, to show a commitment to, um, that one of our most important values is celebrating the diversity that exists in our community, creating and adopting a diversity equity inclusion plan. Um, the fact that we don't have one of those would seem to be maybe a, a good first step in this regard. And then, uh, once that plan is created within itself, similar to this strategic action plan, it would have specific goals and, and tactics and metrics that, um, we would be able to demonstrate how we are moving in the right, uh, direction. And so this is one where I would really like your feedback on this because, um, I, I kind of created it on my own and, um, just wanted to make sure that this was something that you felt was what you were getting at when you wanted to include diversity in your strategic action plan.
You know, Laura, I would definitely support this. I think, uh, this is important for our city to know where we're moving in the right direction. I mean, racial diversity, ethnic diversity, you know, sexual orientation diversity, uh, the, the whole gamut. I mean, we're talking about human beings, we're talking about people, we're people ourselves. We, we need to be, we need to embrace all walks of life and, you know, be inclusive. And, and I, I don't know if I speak for everyone here. I know I speak from my heart and I think the majority of Batavians feel the same way.
Okay.
Agree.
Yes.
I just, I agree.
Great.
Absolutely agree.
Great. Um, so that is my presentation. As I said, what I plan to do from here is to, um, find an engaging format to put this information into that, that community really feels, uh, you know, is, is easy to relate to. And, um, to that, we will add the specific actions that we intend to take in each of, uh, 2021, 2022, and 2023 to make sure that we accomplish those goals. So, um, that's going to take me a little bit of time. Um, uh, my, my goal is to get that document put together before the end of the year, so that we can roll that out to the community, um, first thing next year, if that works for everybody. Great.
Okay, moving on then. Thank you Laura. That was, uh, that was very good. I, I appreciate your efforts on that.
Thank you.
Moving on, we'll go to project status, Laura.
Well, I did want to clarify something. Last night, we were talking about that economic development grant and how much funding might be left in there for us to utilize to, um, perhaps assist our business community right now. And I misspoke when I said that it was, uh, unspoken for because, and, um, Gary can confirm this, the, the amount that was left in there roughly, um, $6,000, uh, for the 2021 budget, we had intended to utilize that funding for the catenary lights on North River Street. Um, and we also need to purchase outdoor public dining tables because this year we were fortunate to be able to lease the tables from Funway, but it would be my greatest wish that they don't have those tables available to loan to us because they were, they're able to resume their normal operations next year. And so we would probably purchase tables, um, from Barco Products, similar to the ones that, um, are on, uh, South Water Street. And between those two projects, I think we would probably, um, use up the remaining funds in that, uh, account. Um, I don't really have any other project information, um, from the last, uh, from yesterday, but, um, I would like to mention that, um, I, I wanted to get your input on not having a meeting the week of Thanksgiving. Traditionally, we have not had a, a committee of the whole meeting during Thanksgiving week and during Christmas week. Um, you know, the, the trade-off is that you, we may have a few more items on that first meeting in, um, December, but there's not anything so time sensitive that it really needs to be on the, uh, meeting, uh, next Tuesday. So just want to get your feelings on that.
I'm good with that.
Skip next week?
Yes.
Good to me.
Agreed.
All right. Done. So, does anybody have any, uh, questions for me about any project status?
Laura, I do. This is Jennifer.
Yes.
Um, I thought that, um, within the TIF budget, we, um, but there's money budgeted for the, um, lighting on River Street. I saw that as one of the projects that was budgeted under, I believe it's TIF 1, one of the projects.
Let me check, Jennifer.
There's 10,000 in there, but, uh, Gary Holm had told me that is not likely to cover it.
Yeah.
That was just kind of a guess, I guess. So there will probably need to be more money, uh, put in there. And the items that Laura mentioned, if you do need to use that money, um, we'll probably need to amend the budget. Because that's a general fund. Those funds are in the general fund, from the grant money. But it's easy enough to do, no problem, ready to do the project.
Okay, because that, yeah, because it's under, um, 6474, the, um, TIF. And it says Streetscape Lighting for North River Street, 50,000.
It was how much?
50,000 under infrastructure.
Okay. I was remembering it wrong then. I thought it was only 10.
You know what? Me too. Because 50
Maybe, maybe we had that discussion and we changed the amount.
I was going to say 50,000 is probably a good estimate of between the engineering and the construction of it, of what that project might end up costing.
Okay.
Okay, uh, is that it Laura?
Yes.
Does anybody have any others? Anyone else? All right, uh, Jennifer Barron, would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you so much. I appreciate your patience. Thank you Laura.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good job, Mike.